...got a lot of busy work up front by reading the required opening statement, which states as follows. This is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Princeton Zoning Board of Adjustment, which is being held on Wednesday, the 23rd of August, 2017, at 7:30 PM in the municipal complex. Assuming to Section 13 of the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of the time and place of this regular meeting has been provided by prominently displaying the schedule of regular meetings on the official notice board in the municipal complex, and by transmitting a copy of this schedule to the Princeton Packet, Town Topics, the Trenton Times, the Trentonian, and Comcast Cable of New Jersey Incorporated. A copy was also filed with the Clerk of Princeton. Could you call the roll call for us, please?
Mr. Cohen? Here. Ms. Coulson?
Here.
Mr. Floyd?
Here.
Mr. Calliden?
Here.
Mr. Ockman? Mrs. Schreiber? Ms. Suri? Mr. Tenenbaum? Chairman Royce?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Before starting some of our busy work, I would like to announce that Louisa Clayton, who has spent a long time doing good service to the Board, has unfortunately found it necessary to retire from or withdraw herself from the Board because of an interpretation of a conflict of interest component of the state's law. And it essentially implies that if you have a profession in Princeton and want to practice that profession while serving on this Board, it's almost impossible to do so. So we'll remember her. She made a lot of very important professional contributions to our gatherings and was a faithful attendee. Both of these things we'll miss a lot. So I'd like that to go in the record, so that we record our pleasures. Now we have to go through a series of things to sanitize what we've done in the past. And the next one is the minutes, which were for the May 24th meeting. This was circulated to you prior to, or in the package that you got this week. Are there any necessary modifications or comments on these minutes? If not, I'd like a motion to accept as presented, and a second to that motion.
I'll move to accept.
We have a motion to accept as presented.
I'll second it.
And we have a second to that motion.
Mr. Cohen? Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry? You calling the roll for it?
Yes, sir.
Good.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Calliden?
Yes.
Mr. Ockman?
Yes.
Chairman Royce?
Here.
Now we have a series of findings of fact, the first of which is the 13 to 15 Vander Venter Avenue. It was, or it has the case number Z1616-425. Again, this came around in our package. If there are any modifications needed, corrections, additions, please say so now. If not, and you approve, I'd like a motion and then a second.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Floyd?
We have a motion and a second, so I guess our attorney knows who can vote.
Yes. Mr. Cohen?
Hi. Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
I can't vote on this.
Uh...
If it was last month.
Miss Kim?
Last month.
That was two months ago.
Two months ago.
Two months ago, you heard.
Okay.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Calliden?
Yes.
Chairman Royce?
Yes.
Okay, the next one is 62 Patton Avenue, which carries the file number Z1717-470. This is the ramage, a case which appeared actually before us on two occasions. It was carried because of a modification not specified to the port. Then, in the second case, a second hearing heard that. Again, if there's a motion and a second.
I have a question.
Yeah.
I don't think I voted for this. Did I? I mean, I don't believe I did.
No, you didn't.
You did.
You didn't.
You did.
Didn't.
Wow.
Did not. But didn't he vote against it?
No.
You sure?
He voted for it.
I thought I voted against it.
I think you kind of were concerned when you did vote for it.
I'm sure, actually, I'm sure I voted against it.
Yes.
Yeah.
Claudia?
I voted for that.
I had you voting for it, but...
Actually, I also was surprised and thought you voted.
No? Okay. All right, then I will change that.
So...
Yeah, I'm sorry about that.
Sorry, how?
Mr. Cohen and Mr. Floyd said no.
Okay. All right.
Okay.
Me too. Well, then, that leaves only you, Chairman Royce, to vote for it, because we have, Mr. Schreiber's out tonight, and so is Mr. Tenenbaum. So, I mean, the only alternative we have is we can carry this for adoption until September, and then we will have, I mean, technically, we only need one vote, but we can carry it until September.
I'm having a job hearing you. What we need...
What I'm saying is, right now, tonight, you're the only person that can vote for the resolution.
Who is?
You.
Me?
That's it.
I see. Do we need more people to vote?
No, I mean, one vote is effective. It works.
I mean, if that's all we need...
Yeah, that works.
Then, why don't I vote yes, and we won't have to carry it to another meeting? Okay.
In case there's no person, no section.
No, there's only one vote, so that's all we've got.
All right. That's interesting. So, the next case is, I guess, 357 Franklin, which carries a file number Z1717-478.
So those eligible to vote are Mr. Cohen, Mr. Floyd, and Chairman Royce.
And they're the only people that can make the four motions to...
Correct.
Accept and second.
Correct.
I move approval.
Floyd?
We have a motion, a second.
I'll second it.
Mr. Cohen, I guess.
All right, Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Chairman Royce?
Here.
And the next one is 84 Clearview Avenue, which carries the file number Z1717-493.
I move approval.
We have a motion to accept.
I'll second.
And we have a second for that motion.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Chairman Royce?
Here.
Now, 56 Armour Road, with the file number Z1717-494V.
Move acceptance.
We have a motion to accept.
Second.
Same second.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Chairman Royce?
Here.
And then, I guess, the penultimate one of these, no, the ultimate one of these, is 23 Sergeant Street, with the file number Z1717-489. This was C and D variance.
Move acceptance.
We have a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
And a second for the motion.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Chairman Royce?
Yes.
And now we come to the business of the evening. We have an application, 79 Coiler Road, with the case number Z1717-501. Is somebody here for that case? Would you come to the front? And what I'm going to do is to ask Mr. Bridger to come and sit down at the table. It's much more comfortable for you and easier for those of us with glasses to see. And if you push the button on the bottom of the microphone, it will glow green. Yes. I'll ask Mr. Bridger just to read the essence of his memorandum to the Board into the record, and then I'll ask you to make your case.
Mr. Bridger, before I swear in, I'll note the noticing is in order. The Board has jurisdiction to hear this. Do you swear or affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. The applicant, Lucia Salas, is requesting a C1, C2 variance to permit the reconstruction of a deck and the placement of an existing air conditioner within the required setbacks. Property is located in the R6 zone and is subject to the Use and Bulk Regulations in accordance with Sections 10B, 253, 255, and 246 of the Princeton Land Use Ordinance. Existing single-family use is permitted as of right. Subject lot is non-compliant with respect to lot width. The requirement's 85. The existing is 75, and it's also non-compliant with respect to the lot frontage. Required is 85. The existing's 75. And the subject property is non-compliant with respect to the following bulk requirements. The front yard setback requirement on Walnut is 41, and the existing is 17 and 1/2 feet to the deck and 25.7 feet to the house. The side yard requirement is 15, and the existing 15-foot setback is to the AC unit. The AC unit is actually, I guess, about 13, 14 feet into that side yard. Applicant seeking variance relief to replace an existing non-compliant deck and air conditioning condenser, which states were there when she bought the house in 2005. A review of tax records confirms that the deck and the condenser were already existing during the 1996 tax revow. No building or zoning authorization for these items was found, and they violate the following setbacks as follows. The required front yard setback for the deck is 17.5 feet, or the required's 41, and the existing's 17.5. In the side yard, the required setback is 10.3. That's really what would look like the backyard, but there's, on a corner lot, there's two front yards and two side yards. And then the air conditioning requires a 15-foot setback, and its existing is 13 feet. So if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them. That's my memo.
Do we have questions for Mr. Bridger? Thank you, Mr. Bridger.
Thank you.
Sorry, if you would care to lead us through what you want to do and tell us why we should let you.
Mrs. Salas, before you begin, we need to swear you in. If you'd raise your right hand, you swear or affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful.
Yes.
Thank you.
So, I want to replace the deck to the size and dimensions that it, the same shape that it is, and has been since I bought the house. It's in need of repair, and I believe to also come up to code. I think it needs another bracing underneath. So, and the reason I'd like to do that is because it's part of our living space. It's, I have pictures, if you'd like to see, that, you know, we have landscaping to block between the neighbors. I also have a letter from the neighbor. They were unable to attend tonight, the people who my deck backs up to, that they are fine with the shape, size and shape of the deck, that need for us to do a replacement. So, as I said, it's part of our living space. It comes off of my kitchen and my dining room, and if you took, I'm not sure if it's three feet or four feet off of it, I can show you that the deck would really be not usable. And my, and there aren't any...
And it's open to the sky?
Yes.
Yeah.
There is a little overhang over part of it.
That's where a roof comes?
My roof, yeah.
Yeah.
It's just my roof, yeah. And we actually want to make it a little more open. It has a wrought iron railing, so we want to put something so it looks more natural. Probably just those wire kind of railings, something like that, anyway. So we'll just have the landscape outside of the view of the window. So, would you like to see the pictures? Or...
You can, you can tell us what you need. We've had diagrams certainly circulated in our package.
But...
Mrs. Salas?
And if you go on Google, you can get a street view of the property.
We'll call all your pictures Exhibit A1, and did you take all these pictures yourself?
I did.
And did you take them recently?
Yeah, I just took them yesterday.
Okay.
And then I also have a letter from the neighbor, as I said, who it backs up to, saying that they have no objections to...
Well, ordinarily, what we would do is rely on your testimony. Okay. We can put it in the file, but we just can't introduce it into the record, because normally we need the person.
The person, okay. All right. Well, they were unable to come.
Chairman, may I ask a question?
All right.
May I ask a question?
Yes, of course. That's what I knew.
I knew there was a reason. So the deck is being replaced. It's not being expanded in any way?
No. The same dimensions. It's just that it's old, and it needs to be replaced.
And does it currently have two sets of staircases?
It does. One to the Walnut Street side, and then one into the backyard.
Backyard, okay. Thank you.
And I guess I also didn't mention the air conditioner condenser. It's on a slab that was existing on the side of the house, like I said, when I bought it.
And you're just wanting to regularize that?
Yeah.
So that the record on file...
Right, so when I...
Won't give you a hassle when you want to replace it.
So when I do need to replace the air conditioner, which knock on wood, won't be soon, hopefully, but then it will be compliant.
Yeah. Good. Okay. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address this case? If you want to talk, you can come forward, give us your name, and swear to tell the truth.
I'm Wade Fritz.
Sir, do you swear from your testimony this evening will be truthful? Thank you.
I'm a neighbor across the street, and I have lived in this house, and used that deck until we felt that it was, you know, safety issue. I'm a contractor, and looked at it, and said, to my best estimate, it really needed to be replaced. But it is a...
Part of their living space. Sliding glass doors, the interior of the house all opens up to this space. I have no problem with the construction of the project the way it's proposed. That's all.
Good. Thank you very much. Okay, seeing no one else?
I just have a quick question. This is really for Mr. Bridger, a clarification. I'm sorry if you explained this earlier. On the first page of the memo, it says that the lot's compliant with the bulk requirements, but it looks like it's, it's not.
It's 85, I believe.
Yeah. And they have 75. So is that something that they do need a variance for?
Not in this case, it was a new base of lot, or, you know, just seeing how it's going to be for damage, your question, or, just situation.
Okay, thanks.
Are there any other questions from the Board? So what is your pleasure? Do we have a motion or comments?
I'll make a motion to approve.
You have a motion to approve. Let me suggest that that motion carry my normal caveat, namely that no exterior lighting, which presumably your new deck will have, should have its light source visible from, off your property, and no lights village from that light source over the property line.
I'm not planning on putting any different lighting.
Sorry?
I'm not planning on putting any different lighting than is already there, but I don't believe it goes, it wouldn't go out.
Yes, I have...
It's on the house. I have two lights, but they, so what are you saying, that they don't go where?
Well, what I favor, because I have neighbors who shine their lights into my bedroom window, and I dislike that a lot, I feel that it's a very reasonable thing to have a light in a light holder that shields a direct view of the light source, and that any light coming out of that light fitting stays on your property rather than going over the neighborhood's property.
Oh, sure, the ones I have do.
It's to preserve the darkness of the night sky that we used to have in the days of candles.
Okay. Yeah, we generally use candles. Yeah.
Good.
So we can see the next eclipse.
Yeah. They always come at night. So we have a motion. Is there a second for the motion?
I'll second it. Is this, as a C1?
I think a C1.
Fine, second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Could you call the roll for us, please?
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Calliden?
Yes.
Mr. Ockman?
Yes.
Chairman Royce?
Yes.
Thank you.
Good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Go your way and do good work. Okay, so we have the last case of the evening, which is 191 Snowden Lane. That carries somewhere the case number Z17, no, yes, 1717-502.
Oh, we did.
Yeah. This is for the records. Would you come forward and sit at the table? There's another chair. You can pull it into the middle, so that you're both comfortable. And you have a computer that you wish to use to show us all the things. While you're setting the computer up, I'll get Mr. Bridger to read the essence of his memorandum into the record.
And I'll note that the noticing is in order, and the Board has jurisdiction to hear the application.
Everything's okay?
Yes.
Good.
Great, thanks. Good evening. The applicant, Lucia Salas, the owner of 191 Snowden Lane, is requesting a C1 and C2 variance to permit the construction of a one-and-a-half-story addition, which will encroach into the prevailing front yard setback and violate the required side yard setback and setback-to-height ratio. Applicant is proposing to construct a 25 by 25, one-and-a-half-story, two-car garage addition with living area above. Subject property is located in the R5 zone and is subject to the Use and Bulk Regulations in Sections 10B, 253, 255, and 25, or 246 of the Princeton Township Land Use Ordinance. Existing single-family use is permitted as of right. The subject lot is non-compliant with respect to lot area. The required lot area is 21,780, and existing is 19,994. It's non-compliant with respect to the required one-to-one setback-to-height ratio. The existing is 1 to 1.25. And applicant is proposing, as I said earlier, to construct a new one-and-a-half-story addition on the cellar elevation of the existing house. It will create a new two-car garage on the front elevation, and a new family room in rear entry on the rear elevation. The second floor will run from the front of the house to the rear and features a dormer. This space will be utilized as a bedroom and an office. And the roof over the existing house on the opposite side of the addition will be re-roofed, and a one-foot, two-inch overhang will be added to the northern elevation. The following variances are required. Prevailing front yard setback, the required, the prevailing is 58, the proposed is 45. The new setback-to-height ratio, the new roof overhang on the northern elevation will increase the existing degree of noncompliance from the 1.125 to 1 to 1.375. The requirement's one-to-one. And the new roof overhang on the north elevation will also encroach into the required side yard setback. The requirement's 15, and the proposed is 13 feet, too. Be glad to answer any questions, if you have any.
Do we have questions? Then, Mr. Bridger?
Yeah, a quick question for Mr. Bridger. In the setback-to-height ratio, the existing is 1 to 1.25. The required is 1 to 1, and so, does that mean when the house was built, if, I mean, I guess there's sort of a timing issue in my mind. I mean, was the one-to-one ratio in effect when the house was built?
It's, I don't know. That's my answer. I don't, I'm not sure if that was in effect at that time.
Or was the zoning, the...
It's hard to tell.
...height ratio tightened up after the house was built?
I think it might have been tightened up, and, I mean, obviously, when people were building ranches back then, it wasn't quite the issue that it is today with, you know, two stories as far as light and air, but I'm not sure. I can't honestly answer that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sure.
So we have the pre-existing condition of being modified and making life worse?
Yeah.
Okay. Are there other questions for Mr. Bridger? So, would you make your case? I assume you need to be sworn in by our...
If you'd first put your names on the record, please.
I'm Lucia Salas, the homeowner.
Right?
Oh. Oh, here.
Oh. I'm Lucia Salas, the homeowner, okay?
I'm John Decruze. I'm an architect.
All right. If you'd raise your right hand, do you both swear or affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Yes.
We swear. Thank you.
Good. You have the floor.
So Lucia's going to make a brief statement, and then I'll present the project.
So you're going to show us...
I'm going to, yeah.
Okay, so...
So, I live with my mother and my brother, and we plan to live in this house, in this ranch. My mother is 76 years old, and she has osteoporosis, so obviously, we're very concerned for her safety and her comfort. And we always seem to be driving her around all the time, because we take her to her doctor's appointments, and we take her to see family and friends. To have the two-car garage would allow us, would allow room for her to be able to access the car from the inside, away from inclement weather, and with better lighting, because she's always nervous about the evenings when it gets a little dark, walking outside. Both my brother and I drive, and so we need to be able to be available for that. And also, as we age, we probably need more space there as well. Thank you.
Okay.
May I ask you a quick question? Can you get into the garage from the, the current garage from the house now, or do you have to go outside to get into it?
You can get into the garage, the current garage right now, but the garage is very small. It's very tight.
Mr. Decruze, would you just indicate on the record you're a licensed architect of the state of New Jersey, correct?
Correct.
And you're the project architect?
Correct.
Okay.
So obviously, as Mr. Bridger introduced the project, this is 191 Snowden Avenue. We're basically asking for two, there are two...
I'm having a job hearing you. If you could get the microphone a little closer.
So the two variances that we're asking for, for two distinct areas of the, of the house. There's the primary variance, or at least we're calling the primary variance, which is really the reason why we're here, which is for the garage addition with living space above. And then there's a secondary variance that is for a new roof, new roof and roof overhang. And I'll explain both of those to you. So in the site plan, the first variance that we're asking for, which is the 25-foot by 25-foot garage, is this red box here. The dotted line along the perimeter of the property are the setbacks. The minimum setback is 25 foot. The prevailing setback is 58 foot. The area that's green is the existing house. So again, the primary variance that we're asking for is for a two-car garage that we'd like to place in front of the house at the end of the existing driveway. We're asking for a 45-foot setback that required is 58. The secondary variance, which is this little area here, there are two things there. One is we'd like to put a new roof on the house. Right now, there's a little gable roof here and a gable roof here. We'd like to remove those two gable roofs and just do a single monoslope roof so that we end up with a screened-in porch here. I should back up one second. The intention is we're going to... we want to keep the existing house. We want to add an addition, and we're going to renovate the house. It's... I don't...
Yeah, we want to update it.
Yeah, we basically want to update the house. So there's work... Ultimately, there'll be work going on in multiple places of the house. But specifically to the secondary variance, one is the new roof. And because we're here asking for the garage variance, we would also like to put a little roof overhang along the edge of the house so that the house aesthetically is consistent throughout.
Where is the ridge? The ridge runs along...
So right now, the ridge runs... Sorry, this dotted line right here is where the ridge is, and it basically runs side to side. So...
And so that overhang is on either side of the...
Correct. And there's other images and elevations that'll explain more specifically that area. But, so again, the required setback is 15 feet. We're asking... the proposed is 13 foot 10. The required height-to-setback ratio, and I lost my mouse, is 1:1. The existing is 1 to 1.25. And the proposed is 1 to 3.75. But again, those are basically the two areas that we're asking for variances. Since we've submitted the existing floor plans, I'll just kind of walk you through them quickly. So we have an existing, obviously, an existing basement. This is the existing first floor. The green area is the existing single-car garage. What's important about understanding where... Well, right now, you can see that the garage is adjacent to the existing basement. You had asked about how can you get from the garage into the house. At the moment, you have to walk... Basically, the little red line is how you get from the existing garage into the existing kitchen. These are the existing elevations. Left-side elevation, right-side elevation, rear elevation, the existing front elevation. So again, in terms of that secondary variance that we're asking for, we basically would like to put a single roof that connects this piece to this piece. The roof would be a shallower slope that it would extend to the front wall of these two areas, and then it would create a covered porch in between the two. From a height-to-setback ratio, again, you can see the required height-to-setback is 1:1, which is this line, and the existing height-to-setback is this line. Then we get it to the proposed. So the proposed first floor plan, again, we would like to put the two-car garage. We've pushed it back as far as we possibly can onto the existing house. Again, it encroaches into that 58-foot prevailing front yard setback 13 feet. This dotted line is the line of the prevailing front yard setback relative to the existing house and the proposed two-car garage. Existing basement, again, the red is the proposed two-car garage. We're nestling it right in into the existing house.
That's on a slab or it goes into the basement?
So, very good question. So the darker green is the existing basement.
Yeah.
The lighter green is an existing slab-on-grade which has a very tiny little family room in the back. And then this portion of that slab-on-grade is where the existing garage is. So again, we're basically...
So the red patch is another slab-on-grade.
So the new garage would be another slab-on-grade.
Good.
That basically nestles right into the existing construction. Since we're, you know, obviously, want to put in a two-car garage addition onto the existing house, we're taking that and then taking the roof slope and creating a bedroom on the... within the attic space of the roof. The new roof, again, as I tried to explain before, the new roof, basically, we're not increasing or putting in addition other than putting a roof over that existing area between those two gable roofs. So the blue area would be the new roof, and this little red area here would be the new roof overhang that we're asking for. If you have... I mean, I can walk you through the details of the interior of the plan or if you have any questions. So then the front elevation. So the proposed, again, this is the 25-foot by 25-foot proposed two-car garage with living space above. The blue, again, is the new roof that we'd like to put on or new roof construction that would enclose that area between the two gables and create a covered porch on the front. And this little red area here is the new one-foot overhang on the side of the house. Currently, there is no roof overhang, so we'd like to add a roof overhang to... so that the house is consistent, aesthetically consistent. We're not putting on any addition here. It's merely just a roof overhang. Since we're adding this new roof, it would be nice to be able to add a roof overhang. In terms of height-to-setback, again, this is existing, the 1:1 required, the 1 to 1.25 that is existing, and then the 1 to 1.375, which would be the proposed.
I'm sorry, can you explain what is that overhang meant to be consistent with? I guess I'm not clear on that. What... is there... is it...
It's just a roof overhang.
Trying to balance it with... on the other side?
What's the aesthetic issue there?
Well, the rest of the house all has overhangs. There is one side of the house that has no overhang. So we would, again, we would like to add an overhang if possible.
So on the front... On the front of this, at the bottom of that blue, there's an overhang in the front of the house, in other words?
I'm sorry?
At the bottom of this blue roof, for example, across the front of the house...
At the bottom here?
There's an overhang there?
Yes.
There will be.
There will be.
But if you're looking at the front of the house, right, you know, and you don't have the overhang where you're requesting the variance, right? Again, I don't see how you see it, okay? See, if you put your finger in front of that, what you're proposing to add, right?
Here?
You're seeing... right. You're seeing the... You don't see the overhang on the front if you're looking at the front of the house, right?
No, you would see it.
You do see it. You see it on the... Rainwater running down, and you would see it when you look.
If you're facing the house on the other side, you see the... you see the overhang.
You do. And it's... I mean, it's... In all honesty, it's a minor request. It's not the main reason why we're here. Obviously, we're really here for the garage. But since we were coming to ask for the garage variance, we took the opportunity to also ask for this variance because, again, aesthetically, we think it's important to the house. It's certainly not a significant functional issue other than protecting the siding when it rains. So normally, if you have windows, it's nice to have an overhang. So when it rains, the water doesn't go in, but it's not a critical issue.
And I was actually going to say if you... If... I'm not an architect, but if you were to... in that way, I can be on the board, right? But if... I would have said if you said to me, "We want it because it will keep water from getting into the house," that would be more of a selling point than... Because it seems to me that what you're adding in adding the... It's actually adding the garage, which... in which I would think that coming out... I'm assuming there's an overhang coming out from the doorway of the garage. Is that right? That seems to me that's what you're trying to match, actually.
I can move forward a slide and show you the other elevations if that helps.
Go forward.
Because it would be a... it would be a side view coming away from the face of the house.
Right.
But it would be matching, in my opinion, more than matching coming down from in front and down in the back, that piece, if I'm expressing myself.
It's also worth pointing out that the change in the height-to-setback ratio just takes into account really just a very small piece of the peak. The 1:1 was transgressed a long time ago, and it's only this small...
Correct. It's only that upper little most portion that would be...
Right at the top of the peak of the roof that is...
The symmetry that you're speaking about, if you look... are you talking about from the left side of the house you have a one-foot overhang, and then you have a similar overhang in the garage?
Correct, so...
But it's also, if you look at it sideways, that symmetry carries on if you did it side to side of the house?
I think so. I think what...
I mean, you basically have a one-foot overhang.
All the way around. That... exactly, yeah. And we're trying to be consistent on this edge of the house.
Yeah, I mean, that answers my question.
And you're going to be running GUT around there anyhow, presumably.
Well, no...
I guess the point being, though, there's a million houses that don't have overhangs all the way around. You know, usually, the sides don't.
I mean, I agree. There are some houses that don't have overhangs.
Yes.
There are many houses that do.
Yeah. But speaking to the point raised in the beginning, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
But could I explain the roof a little bit further on the next slide that I think will clarify? But before we move from this slide, so the 25-foot by 25-foot garage addition on the front, and then this is just the side view of that garage addition, which is this area here. And again, that's the required setback.
And it has an exterior door on the side as well?
Uh, yes.
Yeah, okay.
So to try to explain the roof a little bit more clearly, so right now, this here is the existing profile of the roof. On the rear portion of the house, we're not changing the profile of the roof at all. On the front of the house, the lower blue line is the existing profile of the roof. And then there's a little gable that extends out further beyond that, as I explained in the plan. What we would like to do is get... eliminate those two little gable roofs and do a single roof, which is this blue line that basically connects the two pieces that protrude forward, and that would allow for a covered porch. This area here, so you can see here regarding the roof overhang, we have a little bit of a roof overhang on the back of the house. We have it on this portion, which would be an addition that we would put on. We would have it in the front of the house, in the addition. And so, again, for the aesthetic cohesiveness of the house, we would also like for... Since we're rebuilding these roofs and replacing the roof anyway, we're asking if we could have a... basically, a one-foot roof overhang on the existing house. So reasons why we're requesting the variance. So again, there's basically two variances that I think we're asking for. The primary being the garage addition with the living space above. So one, the lot is slightly undersized. Two, we want to keep the existing house. We just want to renovate it to today's standards. We don't want to tear down the house. Three, as Lucia stated, the family wants to age in place. The existing single-car garage is inadequate for the needs of the family. They would like to park safely inside out of inclement weather. The proposed location of the new garage, we feel is really the only logical location on the site to add a garage. The proposed garage does not set a new precedent. The proposed location does not harm... Again, does not harm the zone plan. The secondary request for the new roof and roof overhang, again, we'd like to add the new shed roof so that we can enclose that portion in the front and make it a covered porch so that there's a covered area before you go into the house. By doing it this way, it significantly simplifies the construction, just a simple monoslope roof. And we feel that it keeps the aesthetics of the house consistent. So this is an image of the existing house. The red area is where we'd like to add the 25-foot by 25-foot garage on the front of the house right at the end of the existing driveway. The blue area indicates that roof that we'd like to add onto the front of the house that basically connects this piece that projects out and this piece that projects out with a single roof. And then that allows for a new entry porch into the house. The little red area here is where we're asking for the roof overhang to extend into the side yard approximately 1 foot, 1 foot 2 inches. We're not putting any kind of addition on this edge of the house. It's merely a roof overhang. So in terms of aging in place and the need for the two-car garage, the existing house has that single-car garage. Again, shows the importance of that two-car garage that's then directly linked to the kitchen and the rest of the house on the interior. Again, we feel that the proposed location of the garage is really the only logical place to put it. So again, the red is the proposed location for the garage. If we were to take the garage and push it back to meet the prevailing front yard setback, you can see that basically it would extend out over into the existing basement. The only way to achieve the garage, obviously, we'd have to fill in that portion of the basement, build a foundation wall, and fill it in with dirt so that the garage could actually occupy that space. So from... I don't think from a cost point of view, you know, it's very logical to do that where you'd basically be carving into the existing house to push the garage back. Again, the green indicates the location of that existing basement. We think the... you know, the only other place really on the site that the garage could go would be in the rear yard. To place the garage in the rear yard, you know, you'd either have to go around the house through the two side yards. You know, we'd have to basically drive around the house this way or around the house this way, significantly increasing the impervious area, which obviously, we don't want to do. Again, you'd have to drive around the house to access the garage, and we do feel that it would be somewhat out of character with the other houses in the neighborhood. In terms of the not setting a precedent and not harming the zone plan, these two images are the two houses directly to the left of the existing house, and they both have two-car garages that face the street. So from... in terms of putting a garage on the front of the house, there are other examples of that directly next to this property. In terms of the 45-foot front yard... Um, in terms of, um, the 45-foot front yard setback that we're, that we're asking for, there are currently, this is Snowden here, um, this is the, our property, or the property that we like to put the two-car garage on, there are currently nine, uh, existing houses that have a 45-foot or less front yard, uh, setback, and then there are three others, in addition to the nine, there are three others that are very close to that 45-foot, uh, front yard setback. So, um, I don't think we're asking for anything that is out of character with the existing,
That's it?
That's it, that's all we have.
Are you here to talk to the case?
I'm just saying, the Lucy's house is awesome.
He works with me, he's great.
Maybe it's for Derek, the, the newer houses that have the, that are 45 feet or less, were they houses that came before us, or how were they built?
No, I mean, the front yard prevailing setback was just put into, uh, effect January 2017, so they pre-exist that, so, yeah.
Could I, could I just make one small, regarding the fact that this is an ordinance that just was enacted, so, um, the front yard setback went from a 25-foot requirement to a 58-foot, uh, requirement, almost doubling the, the front yard setback requirement. And we understand why, 'cause we, you know, um, it's, I guess, for the uniformity of the, of the neighborhood, but I think that, again, even with 45 feet, we're still consistent with the, with the neighborhood.
Could we go back to the slide that, where we discussed, started discussing the, uh, the overhang?
Sure.
The roof overhang? Thank you. No, it's actually the ne- the next one.
I think the next one, forward.
Oh, sorry. This one?
Yeah, this one, right. And, um, I guess, uh, first of all, you discussed a, a proposed front porch, right, which is-
It's underneath the bar roof.
Right, which would be here.
Right.
It's got steps coming in to the front door.
So, sorry, I, can I further explain, because there's actually two issues regarding the height to setback ratio in terms of this area here?
That's what I was gonna get to next.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
No, no, after you.
Just to be, and, and, Mr. Bridger, maybe you can fill in if I, because there, or ex, further explain this if I'm not explaining it correctly, but, so there's the, the issue of adding this roof. Technically, by adding this roof, we're, we're further increasing the nonconformity in terms of the height to setback, and, and maybe, again, Derek can explain how that actually works, because the, the existing is taking at the peak of the roof, but yet, this is the existing roof line, so, again, technically-
To increase the existing degree of noncompliance, and the roof goes up, it goes into that plane of the setback.
So that's one-
But it doesn't run into any one-to-one height to setback ratio from-
It's, it's currently not defined, so anytime, it's per the same size-
Oh, I see, if you, if you do that, you say you're increasing the degree of noncompliance.
And it's truly de minimis.
But essentially, it's, it's trivial.
Yeah, it's truly-
Right, okay, if it's-
Yeah, no, no, I-
Trying to-
I understand.
I'm just, yeah, so, because, again, with the roof, relative to the height to setback ratio, so there's that non-trivial issue, which is, which, you know, it, which is changing the slope of the roof that is exists to a shallower-sloped roof, so that's one issue regarding the roof. The second issue regarding the roof, which there, we don't, you know, is, is then the, the, the roof overhang on the left side.
Yeah.
Or the setback, which also then impacts the, the-
But height to setback, in a sense, is worrying about light, uh, and shape, and shading, and your shallower roof, although it extends further, uh, forward, is at a lower angle, and you'll, you'll get light coming in at that angle, it should be fine.
So, I'm sorry, I don't, no, if I answered your question-
You don't understand neither do I.
No, 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 I, I get all this, I mean, I, I do think, if, going back to the other slide, and, and understanding, you know, the, the degree of the issue, but nevertheless, it's the overhang, looking at this, correct me if I'm wrong here, Mr. Bridger, and, and I'm sorry, I didn't catch your name?
Uh, John.
Yeah, John. But, you know, the proposed height to setback ratio increases to one to 1.375, looking at this, solely because of the overha- the overhang to the left? Whereas if it weren't there, it would be at the existing one to 1.25, if you don't add the overhang.
It, well, it would, it would increase slightly, because that front part of the roof is going to a more shallow pitch, so if it roofs here, it's already, let's say the height to setback line bisects that triangle of the, the gable of the roof, less, like a foot below the roof peak, so adding that height of the roof for the front porch to enclose that area in the front, still triggers a height to setback variance. The overhang triggers the height to setback variance and the side yard setback variance, encroaching the one point, or one foot two inches into the 15-foot setback.
I see. So, so, so the height to setback rage, variance is going to come into play either coming to the front or by expanding the roof off to the left?
Correct.
Okay, it's, it's either or, it's an or situation, okay, fine, thank you.
And I, I understand the height to setback, but also, um, the actual height of the roof itself is not that tall, right?
Correct.
Right? How, how high is it?
Um-
18 feet or so?
It's, we're not ch-
The height of the roof-
I don't change. We can look at the drawing, but we're not, we're not changing the height of the roof, that ridge, the ridge on this, here, the ridge is staying in the exact same location, we're not actually changing the height of the roof.
The height is about 16 feet.
About 16 foot is not the most imposing.
Right, that is correct, we're not changing the height of the roof.
It's just the overhang on the end that's creating the, uh, the, uh, the height to, to, uh, to setback, I mean, it's creating the encroachment, and it's de minimis, I mean, it's, it's-
Correct.
It's really minimal, it's a 13-inch overhang, which-
Correct.
Adds, quite frankly, to the aesthetics of the house, in fact, the other two slides, in fact, the other two slides that you showed, the newer houses, both had setback, had overhangs on the roof.
Correct.
It makes it, as you said, more contemporary, and it protects the, the side of the house. So, okay.
I have a question about the garage size. I understand that you're, first of all, you wanna put two cars in it, so it definitely needs to be bigger, um, but I'm wondering, is the drawing to scale? It looks as though, if it's 25 by 25, um, I haven't actually ever measured the length of a car, but that, I'm not sure that, do you need that? Can anyone answer my question? Do you need 25 feet?
You can do a garage, you can-
If it comes in?
No, but that's why that, that's not what we're here to-
Thanks, Steve.
I'm very sensitive to garages, but, um, you, you can do, you can do a garage in less than 25 by 25, but from a practical standpoint, if you wanna be able to get, get a car in there, get out of the car easily, have a little bit of space in front for a bicycle, a lawn cart, anything, then 25 by 25 is a nice, workable dimension. And in this case, I don't think it, uh, I don't think it, it, it hurts the, the, or compromises the, the, uh, the, uh, the block and the setback by doing that, I think it's, I think that's, uh, you know, truly a non-issue here, and the added space makes it a lot more functional.
It just, it just means that it comes out that much more.
Just means it comes out a little better.
It's more of a presence in the front of the house.
But as the architect said, when you look at other houses on the block, you know, because of this new, this new, uh, regulation, you know, he could've done it before and even gone out further, so, I, I, I agree, I think it's a nice addition, you know, it'll, uh, ensure that this house, you know, the house as well as the people will age comfortably in place in the community.
You know, I wanna make one last comment, which is, I, I understand what the, the two of you are saying, you know, as far as the relative scope of the request in terms of the overhang to the left, but I, I've gotta say, and Attorney Casey, what, would love to get your counsel on this too, I mean, the idea of a, an aesthetic, a variance for aesthetic purposes that increases, you know, a non-conforming, um, setback or, or, or height ratio issue, I mean-
We don't make aesthetic judgments here, we look all the time.
Well, but, but that's what the request was for.
Well, you can say it's a fun, you can say it's a functional, oh, the overhang protects the side of the house, so we can say, rather than aesthetic, say it's functional.
Yes, but-
Well, let me respond this way, remember that when an applicant is seek, seeking a bulk variance, it can either be a C1, which is normally related to the size, the shape, the topography, something that's directly tied to a quality of the property, or you could grant it as a C2 variance, which now does not require that kind of a hardship on the part of the applicant, and instead requires you to find that it will promote the purposes of zoning, and that it also will not have any negative impacts on the neighborhood, the zone plan. So, you'll see in Derek's memos, he always includes for you the provisions of the municipal land use law, which spell out the purposes of zoning. One of those standards is that it will create, uh, uh, let's just see, which one are we? I, create a desirable visual environment through creative development technique and good civic design. So, while it's true that, um, normally the board does not get into the aesthetics of something, where the applicant is saying to you, "We think this will create a desirable visual appearance," uh, the municipal land use law lets you take that into consideration if you agree with, with the applicant's position, and you can see, obviously, there are other standards, also very general, uh, guides the appropriate development of the land, provides adequate light, air, and open space, establishes a mix of variety of housing in your community, so, there are many, many, um, general purposes that you can look at if you feel that it deserves a variance, but it just does not fit into that box of, there's something about the site, it's too small, in this case, it's slightly undersized, but otherwise, it complies with the, uh, the lot area, the depth, the width.
Yeah, no, that's very helpful, thank you, but, but it seems to me, based on what you've said, what we're really looking at is a C2 request and not a C1 request.
I'd agree with that.
I think actually one of the other zoning issues, uh, is, is difficult, but Princeton, uh, is the nice place it is to live in, because it has a spectrum of house sizes, and we're not all living in 1.3 million, uh, houses that have been built by knocking down a house this size and building a much bigger structure, and we need houses like that for people like me who are getting old, and we also need houses like that for young people who are trying to continue to live in Princeton after having graduated from the high school or whatever, so, I think this type of improvement to the housing stock has got a lot of, in a, in a sense, town zoning type of advantages. I, I think this is a very straightforward, uh, approach to a, a problem that seems to me to have done it very well with, you know, a dotted line shifting so that, uh, you can hardly see it, and a technical thing because of the roof changing slope and increasing a degree of noncompliance, I mean, but, to me, it's, uh, a good suggestion. So, who else wants to have a go?
Well, I, I think, although I'm s- sensitive to the front yard setback, I, I think that neighborhood, one of the characteristics is that there's a lot of variation, um, there's not a true character other than that, um, and different types of houses, different types of setbacks, so, um, I'm, I'm, I'm okay with this intrusion into the setback, which of course is, um, behind the 25-foot line, but understanding the, um, the average setback, but still, I, I think it's acceptable to me.
Okay, so can we get a motion of the second?
Before the board votes, Mr. DeCruz, we'll mark all this as Exhibit A.
All my exterior lighting and drainage-
We'll, we'll mark all your slides as Exhibit A, and can you give the board secretary a copy of them, the slides?
Sure.
Okay, sir.
So we go to C2?
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve it, uh, with your condition for lighting and drainage.
Lighting and drainage condition?
Yes.
Seconded for that motion?
I'll second it.
Have a second for the motion, can you call the wall then?
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Calliden?
Yes.
Mr. Ockman?
Yes.
Chairman Royce?
Yes.
Is approved.
Good.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, I don't think we have anything else, so, we are adjourned.
After Labor Day.
Huh?
Yeah, we just had a hard up.
Labor Day may not exist, but tomorrow morning, you know, our president may do away with it.